Hi, everyone. Welcome to the last session of the 11th Annual World Stem Cell Summit and RegMed Capital Conference. So, because some people might only see this one video. My name is Bernie Siegel. I'm the Executive Director of Genetics Policy Institute and the Regenerative Medicine Foundation. And, you know, as the Chairman of the event and the founder of the event, and putting a million pieces together, or a million notes in a symphony, you always worry that there's that one sour note that everyone's going to remember. And the one item that I rarely prepare, my closing little advocacy keynote, because I'll lose my notes anyway, and at this stage of the event. This has been for the Genetics Policy Institute and RegMed team, just a great experience in coming to Atlanta that has been very open and welcome to us. And it's been a real pleasure to work with such amazing academic and nonprofit partners this year as our co-organizing institutions, which of course is Mayo Clinic and Kyoto University Institute of Integrated Cell Materials Sciences, the New York Stem Cell Foundation, Wake Forest Institute of Regenerative Medicine, the BioBridge Global, again, the phenomenal blood and tissue bank that's in the regenerative medicine space, and the Georgia Center for Regenerative Engineering and Medicine, Emory, Georgia Tech, the University of Georgia. And this meeting could not have gone on without it. Of course, I'll call out my friend and call you up in a few minutes, Alan. If I don't, you'll have to storm the stage to remind me if I start to hallucinate, but Alan Fernandez of the GPI team. If you could give him a round of applause, because without our erstwhile Associate Director, this just meeting would not be able to take place. So, I appreciate Alan so much. I wanted to let you know that this is, after my short remarks, that this is an open forum. And whether you're from industry, advocacy, or anyone that's attended the meeting, are welcome to come to the mic and provide some comments about the summit, your experience, what your hopes and dreams and goals are for the field of stem cells and regenerative medicine. The only thing I don't want you to complain about is anything that I did wrong, or if you didn't like some of the wonderful amenities here, which we really were treated very well at the Hyatt Regency Atlanta. Just, you can put that on your Yelp review of the meeting. But, just. First, I wanted to actually mention a book. This is, as you know, my stock in trade before I became a full-time stem cell advocate 13 years ago, was I was a trial lawyer in Miami, Florida, for many years, had my own firm. And, as I like to say, I found a higher calling than suing people. But, as a non-academic, I wrote many legal briefs. I gave many continuing legal education talks. But, one day, my dear colleague Alan Fernandez suggested to Wiley, one of our wonderful publishers, you know, Bernie would be really good to write a book chapter. So, silly me, I said, sure, but I would bring in a colleague with a more academic bent, which of course is our dear friend Alan Giacomo of the Legal Advisory Board of our institute, and also an adjunct professor of law and regulation, an FDA at Hofstra University, and a partner in Sidley Austin Law Firm, so, and who loves to write. So, silly me, I said, well, we'll knock this out in a couple of weeks. Well, Alon Vortes, as he knows, is the principal editor of this volume, is, we just received our copies this week, knows, this is a two-year process in creating. And I've read more drafts of a chapter than I ever cared to. But Alan and I put together a chapter called "The Role of Patient Advocacy and Clinical Translation of Regenerative Medicine." And in this chapter, we tried to trace, first of all, in the history of patient advocacy, to see where and how patients and advocates have moved the needle. And painting with broad strokes, the greatest single clinical trial, I think, in the world was that of the polio vaccine, and where actually fetal cells were used. And millions and millions and millions of parents of American children volunteered their children for this clinical trial. And as a result, we have eradicated polio. And that was done through the agitation of parents that were fearful of their children suffering from this affliction. In my wife's family, Cousin Judy in New York had a time in an iron lung. So, it impacted many of the children, or the fear of this in the baby boom generation, of which I'm a member. Well, that was with the March of Dimes. When we used to go to school in first grade, we'd have this little folder, and every week we'd put a dime in the folder. And it was picked up and sent. It was a giant change in the way research was funded, and it moved the needle in a way. The public was involved in a giant way. In the book Emperor of All Maladies, there's a tremendous chapter about Mary Lasker, who basically says she hated chronic diseases as much as she hated sin. And it talked about how she took something that was as dead as a doornail, the Cancer Society of Academics, and transformed it into the American Cancer Society. And millions and billions of dollars in funding of research has moved the needle in incredible way, and using her public relations background and that of her husband that was selling things like Lucky Strike cigarettes and soap, and used Madison Avenue in a way to make patient advocacy part of the public discourse. And then, of course, there was the AIDS HIV movement, and the fact that a population of gay men were the front lines of a world health disaster, and how the old system of the way we regulate drugs and get drugs, useful drugs, into the human population, these activists moved the needle on this. And then, there's the breast cancer movement, like the Coman Foundation, where women's health was underfunded, and now we all wear pink ribbons. Well, why? It's because this is a social movement, has taken the forefront, and women's health issues have moved the needle. So, when you look at these examples, actually, the advocates for stem cell research and regenerative medicine have also played an enormous role in this field advancing as it has. And when you think about Prop 71, and we heard some wonderful presentation by Bob Klein and the Americans for Cures Foundation, who was the engine behind, one of the principal engines, of course, behind the California Institute of Regenerative Medicine, that is a game changer, with $3 to $6 billion going into it, and amazing impact on the institutions in California moving this field forward. Well, that was, he's a parent of a child with diabetes. That's what motivated him. That's what motivated Susan Solomon at the New York Stem Cell Foundation, who wasn't a scientist, but was able to raise close to $150 million. The New York Stem Cell Foundation is doing some of those cutting-edge research on the planet. She has her own labs. The New York Stem Cell Foundation has its own laboratories, engaged with world-class scientists, and funds research around the world. This is an individual that did this. It was the patient advocates that moved the needle to protect stem cell research, to advance the federal government's funding for embryonic stem cell research, and defended research from being banned by World Treaty and the United Nations, SCNT, something that I was involved with from the very beginning, that we faxed 35,000 fax letters to the United Nations, and saved SCNT from being banned by World Treaty by a single vote. And the legal committee staged a conference for the United Nations with leading scientists. My organization played a prominent role in that. So, these things have moved the needle and advanced regenerative medicine. But the things that motivated us to start the Genetics Policy Institute have really evolved, because originally, we were advocates for embryonic stem cell research, an area that we felt was threatened unreasonably by, and under threat of being banned, a really promising form of research. But we have evolved, just as the field has evolved, to embrace the entire field. We want ethical research to take place. But it's not enough to cure a mouse of diabetes if it's going to take 30 years to get this into the human population because of issues related to regulation, to problems in organizing clinical trials, the not having global standards. And the deeper that I got into it as an advocate, as a former, as a cancer survivor that chose to devote his life to stem cell advocacy and regenerative medicine, because I feel it's the future of medicine, with a goal to accelerate this, when I look at, when I look at this, we must find a way to accelerate. We can't wait 30 years to get this into the human population. And it's my personal worldview that this is a five-alarm fire. This isn't, this isn't a joke. This isn't a dream. This is something where people are dying, that people are suffering of chronic disease all around the world, and this is a time in history where we have the convergence of technologies that a scientific revolution that would have taken centuries or decades is just accelerating almost beyond human comprehension, or Alvin Toffler would say, "Future Shock," in that great book that so inspired me that I read in college. So, this is where we're in, the era of Future Shock, where we have all human knowledge in our hand, in our smartphone, that we have this convergence of technologies. If you went on the exhibit floor of the summit and you saw all these amazing tools and devices and nanotechnology and services, and trying to move this forward with these tools and this sense of collaboration, it's a major thing. So, at the cornerstone of this advocacy organization, which is now a combined organization, we want to create public appreciation for this field, because as Lincoln said, "With public appreciation, you can do anything. Without it, nothing can be done." And I would submit to you that it is the public and the patients that are the underpinning and the driving force of the societal change, where these innovations are going to be brought to the human population. It's happening now in many respects, and much of the work that's done by our organization is to facilitate this. In the book that I'm holding up, and I hope you all buy it, especially because Alon Vortes is here and he worked so hard to edit it, which is titled "Stem Cells in Regenerative Medicine: Science Regulation and Business Strategies," the chapter that we wrote was "The Role of Patient Advocacy in Clinical Translation of Regenerative Medicine." And there are aspects of advocacy that we pointed out, the advocacy tools, of agitation, legislation, dealing with regulation and guidelines, policymaking, litigation, collaboration, education, innovation, political campaigning, and fundraising. Each of these tools, when you think about the organizations that I discussed, use these tools in different ways, as did the proponents of stem cells and regenerative medicine, to change the way this is regulated and change the way that this is funded around the world. So, what we do at the Combined Genetics Policy Institute and Regenerative Medicine Foundation, we've combined the strong points, the projects of two organizations with similar goals, that wants to accelerate this field as quickly as possible, understanding it's a five-alarm fire. So, what can we do with the skill sets that we have to facilitate the field? And this has been a journey for 13 years for my organization. I think the Regenerative Medicine Foundation, founded by Dr. Tony Atala, both of them what they call a 501(c)(3), a charitable organization, a nonprofit organization. We shared the same goals. The RMF was about five years, five years old. And when I think of the projects, I think of them in three areas. There's the public awareness, public education and appreciation projects. There are public policy projects, and community and conference projects, community building projects. So, related to public awareness, public education and appreciation, of course, we as a 21st-century organization are heavily involved in digital media, social media. And our organization, I edit a newsletter called the 360 Stem Cell and RegMed Newsletter. And I don't proclaim any greatness to this newsletter, other than the fact that it does have a following of about 25,000 online, and through LinkedIn, my own LinkedIn connections, I have close to 7,300 LinkedIn connections. We have like 7,000 followers on Twitter, a robust Facebook page. And we try to take the weekly news, as synthesized by yours truly, having organized 11 stem cell summits, of things that resonate to an educated layperson that's important in the field, whether it's, and not only just scientific breakthroughs, there are plenty of wonderful newsletters, including those of our friends at Alpha Med Press, that can cover the science much better than I can, but not necessarily pick up on the societal issues that captures the imagination of the public, or is important, I think, to advancing the entire field. And we feel the scientific community must understand the context of the world that they're in. Very often, scientists, as you know, are just looking through the microscope and don't realize the cells that they're studying, actually, there's a person in the next room that really wants this research to be successful, or maybe not even understand where the money comes from so that their research lab can work. So, besides our social media, we speak. I've had the fortune of speaking all over the world related to patient advocacy and stem cells at many meetings. And I assure you, when I spoke before the German Academy of Sciences on this topic, which is the Leopoldina, the longest-running scientific society in mankind's history, of which Darwin and Einstein had been members, they were turning over the grave that I spoke there. But anyway, as someone passionate about the science, there's even a room for someone like myself, who's just a lawyer. News releases, we work with the media. We have extensive media contacts throughout the years, from the time I did the cloning case, ancient history, to the present, that we work with media to get the story out. Also, one of the special things of the Regenerative Medicine Foundation that they were bringing into our merged organization is art. Art, beautiful art that was commissioned with Kelly Maloukis, "The Keys to the Cures," which has been displayed in museum, that, and the, the science of cells is portrayed in images. When you think of the glorious photographic art from the Hubble Space Telescope, "Now let's move thou same beauty of nature down to the cellular level." It's absolutely amazing. And this goes into the public classroom and captures the imagination of students. And speaking of, and music as well, my intrepid partner, Alan Fernandez, has brought music into this field, whether it be through a concert or music at a conference. We want to resonate with the things that people are passionate about. We have been longtime supporters of the Student Society for Stem Cell Research, an independent student group that's been around for 11 years, and you've heard me talk of Joe Riggs, who's in the audience, one of the original members of the Stem Cell Action Coalition. One student, a society of one at University of South Florida, that has now had as many as 30 chapters, where we're writing letters of recommendation for students for law school and for medical school. And I wrote a letter of recommendation for Joe to get into his graduate school PhD program in, at Virginia Commonwealth University, and now he's a PhD in stem cell research, a post-doc at Harvard, one of the great inspiration stories that I found. So, working with Tony Atala's RegMed Foundation that he founded and now merged, there's a student council, we're going to work even closer with Joe to expand student chapters around the world. On public policy, we've worked very hard. We've worked in the United Nations and staged a conference there. We did a tape with Christopher Reeve and played it to the United Nations in the UN debate. We've written letters to the, wrote a letter and a submission to the NIH on lifting the restrictions and federal funding that was very well received. Our group has been, attended the White House meeting on new organs this year. We filed an amicus brief supporting the government position in the case of Shirley v. Sibilius, that was threatening to clamp down federal funding for stem cell research. We are very proud that we created our own journal, The World Stem Cell Report, which, I'll hold up, you all got a copy of this in your conference bag, which, starting this year, is a supplement to Stem Cells Translational Medicine. And one of the things that give us additional scientific gravitas is the fact that we are official journal partner of our Combined Genetics Policy Institute and Regenerative Medicine Foundation, is the very highly, highly impact journal, Stem Cells Translational Medicine. Edit, the chief editor is Anthony Atala, of course, Dr. Atala, published by Alpha Med Press, who is led by Ann Murphy, who got our Stem Cell Action Award. And speaking of which, yes, yes, we'll get to that in a second. So, we have the journal, but also, we have an astonishing science advisory board and legal advisory board. And I've often said with the science advisory board that we have, with the likes of Gene Loring and Evan Snyder and Doug Melton and Rudolf Janisch and Ian Wilmot and Alan Trantzen and other luminaries in the field, Raphael Dvorodetsky and others that might be in the room, this science advisory board has allowed our organization to kick the door open and deal at the highest levels of the federal government, as evidenced by the fact that we had Dr. Kalath here and Dr. Witten here in the FDA panel. So, all of these things include books. Eve Harold, our Director of Public Education, wrote the bestselling book, Stem Cell Wars, published in 2005. Now, we've had a chance to write a book chapter for Wiley. These types of things, we feel buttress the world of public policy and benefit in a way. But finally, if there's a core strength, it's the community that we have helped build. For 13 years, we've networked as an advocacy community. And the secret of this summit, people assume it's a science meeting, it's a legal meeting, regulatory, economic development, all the things that you've enjoyed and experienced, but at its core, it's an advocacy meeting. This is coming about because we are patients. I was a patient. We're all patients. We're all patients. We all know, and we all will know one day. Even the scientists, even the people in industry. So, they don't realize that they are supporting at its core patients that are trying to accelerate the field. I think some of them get it, but that's the real purpose and the strength of this meeting. We founded something called the Stem Cell Action Coalition, which is the largest coalition of nonprofit organizations and laboratories around the world, over 100, that support this field, that we are now moving the needle, that it's not just about funding stem cell research, but to cover regulation in all aspects. We support all cells, not just a single type of cell. And in 2016, this is going to launch as an even greater platform of influence. There's nothing like this organization. And when you look at 100 logos, or 125 logos, believe me, your voice starts to be heard. And we're about to use that voice in a megaphone to move the needle on this field. We have relationships with dozens and dozens of organizations. We're on boards, they are supporting us, we support them, and the scientific societies that support our organization, including ISCT and others, we deeply appreciate. And also, the student, the Stem Cell Action Awards. We're the only organization that for 11 years has recognized the advocates, the people that support the life sciences, the individuals and organizations that impact this. And I like to think, and the surprise that you may have, is that the, it's not giving the award, it's not, it's, the power goes to the one giving the award, not necessarily the one receiving the award. The folks that receive the award honor us and honor the patient advocacy movement by just standing on the podium and receiving it. And in turn, it does empower us in a way. But it's, after 13 years of doing this, it's now time to move to the next level, because this field is accelerating so fast. And finally, it's the summit itself. We are not just in the summit business or the conference business. I could go into the conference business. I certainly have learned enough about it, but it's not about that. The summit is designed as a platform, an engine, for those that participate, to network, to gain knowledge and to understand context. And the feedback I got this year was the best ever. We are trying to portray our field to the world. We want to alleviate those that are scared of the acceleration of science. At the same time, we want to be a proponent for science to move ethically and safely forward. We want the FDA not only to present, but to listen. We want to make sure that our consumers and patients are treated safely and not taken in by hype or hurt themselves as they move forward. This is what this little tiny organization does. I assure you, we need help. We really need help. And those of you that are watching this or thinking that this is somehow magically created, we are a tiny, dedicated staff, dedicated to doing this because we're passionate about it. And we're going to change the world, and we're going to change it together. So, I want to thank all of you for attending the World Stem Cell Summit and the RegMed Capital Conference. I'm truly open to your suggestions of what we can do to improve this meeting so it is a better platform, and we reach and extend our hands to you. We are friends. You help us, we will help you and plug you in as you need it, because we are the ultimate rolodex in this field. 11 years, I've invited people individually to speak on the summit platform and sending each email myself, which is crazy, but this is what it is. It's all about relationships. So, thank you. Those are my remarks. [applause] I welcome anyone to the microphone now, please. You must be tired of hearing my voice.
Can you say a word?
You can go to the microphone and say a word.
On behalf of all of us, we want to thank you, Bernie, because you are unique. If you were not here, somebody had to invent you. I never saw, never saw such a dedicated and focused and fluent man in my life, who can promote the field more than the field even could think of. And some people can't believe that you are just a lawyer. You are a scientist, you are...
Despite being a lawyer, right.
You are a scientist, you are a better scientist. You know science better than many people around here. And on behalf of all of us, I am part of your scientific committee, but on behalf of all of us, I want to thank you for your great work.
Thank you, thank you. That's very kind. That's very kind.
And your wife.
Yes.
Don't forget.
Yes. After, thank you, thank you. I must say, as I often am reminded, that even a prophet has to take out garbage in his own house, I assure you. Thank you, Rafi, for the kind remark. Francis.
I also want to thank you, Bernie, so much.
I also want to thank you, Bernie, so much. I've got to tell you, before I met Bob Klein and yourself, I felt like a mom screaming out and crying out like Chicken Little, "The sky is falling, the sky is falling, and nobody's listening." You know, you get like a little visit with a doctor, they give you prescriptions, send you out, but there's no true, real help. And until I met Bob Klein and yourself, I felt like, you know what, these people are serious, we're going to have cures, they're listening and they care. And I am so grateful to you for offering this platform to allow us, as patient advocates, to tell our stories and just to let people know about the suffering that we're enduring and people who can actually do something about it. So, thank you so much.
Thank you, Frances. I can truly say, in my career as an advocate, I've had two key moments of, really tremendously, three key moments, I just have to share this with you. Please step up the microphone, but let me just share, share three little, little stories. So, when the Stem Cell Action Network formed, it was just a handful of advocates, and we were even sleeping on each other's couches around the country as we were passionate about this in two thousand, in two thousand and three. One of our friends was a fellow Frank Cocozelli in New York, and Joe, you remember well, we used to be on these conference calls. And Frank suffered from a devastating disease, I'm not, I'm not sure I remember, it might have been multiple sclerosis, muscular dystrophy, yeah, muscular dystrophy, yeah. And, but I had not met him in person, and there was a function where they were opening up a regenerative medicine center at Rutgers, and I was invited up there. And from a distance, I saw Frank's condition in a, in a chair, and so helpless at the time. And I couldn't go up to even speak to him, I got tears in my eyes, because I had not seen, seen Frank before for the first time. It was really impacting me, because I lived in my own silo of my own issues. And then, the second thing, the second thing was meeting Christopher Reeve in his house and shooting a video. This was six months before he died, and that, of course, the graciousness that, and kindness that he showed me to allow me to do that, eighteen months into a crazy project that I had invented, meant more than anything. But maybe the most impactful thing was meeting Frances and some of the other families that suffer from Huntington's disease, right before the 2011 summit in Pasadena. And I had not met a family with Huntington's disease, and let me tell you something, when I learned about the family members that had passed away and the children that had passed away from this affliction, I was shaken to my core in seeing this as, and when I, there's nothing bigger than a five alarm fire, but this one really, this one really got to me. So, Frances was very inspiring to me, as her, as her friends and family and were to me on this.
Thank you so much, Bernie. I guess for most of you, I raised my voice before, and so I don't probably have to identify myself, but I, I remember last year, I...
You're with the FDA, I believe, yes?
Right. And the last year, and I said, I remember the moment, I want to talk as a physician, as not as FDA regulator, so I took off my badge last year. Anyway, I just, I want to tell you a few things. Last year, as, by chance, because I saw the World Stem Cell Summit notification from my email, and I saw, this is wonderful, I would like to attend, but I was oncologist, so they look at the calendar for agenda, and my immediate supervisor said, "Well, this is not a focus on oncology." But I thought, I said, "Well, this is well-rounded, I would like to see it, I would like to go to attend." Luckily, I did. And in the meantime, also, that was the first meeting I attended after ten years of hiatus, not attending any out-of-state meeting, because I was raising up my two boys. So, I came, I went there, and I was so impressed, what fantastic meetings I did, tell you how much I really appreciate it. And then, after that, I attended a few more meetings this year. I still want to say this, one of the best meetings I have attended, for the reasons that, first of all, it is very well-rounded and very well-organized, and you have, you have this patient-oriented theme, and from all the angles. So, for me, I benefited tremendous amount, because from the point of, as a regulator, you have global regulator issues, from my science, you have that, I used to be a geneticist, so I was fascinated and I learned from science point of view. And I also learned how you organize, I haven't really know exactly how you do it, but I see that you orchestrate this like a big symphony, and you get the patient advocacy and the people's power. I grew up in China, so I was puzzled how things work here in US. And I see this model, that's why I keep telling you, I want to learn from you. So, you created this model, I understand that, looks like easy, smooth-going, everything's orchestrated so well, but I understand a tremendous amount of work behind, and this also...
No, it only takes two weeks, it's...
Well, and I would, so, another point is, I want to mention about this, it occurred to me, it's a, this, not only is it a symphony, but also is a United Nations of stem cell. And I really appreciate what you have done, and you are a legend. I want to...
Don't say that, please, I can't, I can't take that, no.
I want to tell you this...
I'm only a lawyer, really.
From the bottom of my heart, this, didn't go through internal discussion, it's not the FDA comment, but from the bottom of my heart, as a person, you're, what you have contributed, what you have accomplished in advancing the stem cell research and therapeutics product, in helping the patients, will go down, the history will record, and you'll be very much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you very much. I should end the meeting now, before, but those Danish, you know, we didn't really...
So, this is an extraordinary meeting, I didn't really know what to expect when I came here, so I was lucky enough to have the support from Stem Cells Translational Medicine, but this is unique in that, this is the first time I've ever been to a meeting that was, had investors and a lot of commercial entity to it, right? It was actually very, very, very low on the actual basic academic science, which was kind of refreshing. So, as a junior investigator, as the people that are going to be the next people coming up trying to take over the realms, I actually found it rather fascinating. And one thing that I've always noticed, and I tell my students all the time, is you're not trying to rescue or heal a cell in a dish, you're not trying to heal an animal, you're trying to help patients. And so, I do think it would be really interesting to try and reach out to more of the junior investigators that are sort of, starting to lead the way in the stem cell field, because there are a lot of really good ones out there. Because I think it's really important that they see this, this is how you commercialize an actual therapy, right? You need the outside support of people.
So, how do we bring those junior investigators in? What can we do better to do that?
I'll give you a list.
Pardon me?
I'll give you a list of really good, really good people that you might suggest bringing. Tell, tell them you've got a lot, people that like to invest in stem cells, and tell them they might have a longer list of disclosures they might have later on in life. So, I would say, just tell them, I mean, this literally is a way to actually find people to help fund your research and bring it to the clinic.
This is what we're trying to do, I keep telling them.
Anyways, thank you, I really appreciate the meeting.
Thank you, thank you.
Bernie.
Yes.
Alan, this is my first World Stem Cell Summit. I hope it won't be my last after coming, and I have to say, quite often, you come to a bunch of conferences, you're not quite sure what to expect, they're overhyped, the people that you hear about are overhyped, but all I can say is that I think the reputation, both of the conference and of the people who've helped organize it, and the team, matches what I've heard. It's been a pleasure to be here, I thank you for the invitation to also be part of the panel. And I think the thing that really differentiates this conference from a number of other things that I've been to, is not the fact that it's multidisciplinary, which is one of the differentiators, is not the fact that there is a focus on just translation, it is the human element, which is the underwriting strongest point that comes out, very clearly, which is, people want to make a difference, eventually, to patients. And how do we do that, as a group, as a team, as a joint force, all pulling in the same direction? And I think that's very, very, very powerful, because it's not just about one element. And when you have that as an overriding mission, for want of better words, good things will happen. So, we've talked about doing stuff together, and I look forward to it next year, on behalf of Aura and Posage Family Foundation, and personally, I look forward to working with you all and making that change.
Thank you so much, I appreciate the comments so much.
I'll be quick. Well, first, Bernie, you're a role model for students, and we really appreciate the support that you've given, we thank you very, so very much. You know, Bernie's had a long career history, but started GPI later on in life, right?
Yes.
So, you can always, you can always follow your dreams, it's never too late. And so, with that, I don't have much else, I'll give it, say thank you, but I don't pay Bernie to, to, to say good things about me, he actually helped sponsor SSR and get me to the summit, so, he brings me here and then says good things about me. Anyways, thank you for that. You know, one of the things that I'm observing, and I will talk, maybe this is odd, maybe it's not, I don't know, I invested in a company in the stem cell regenerative medicine space, advanced cell technology, or became Macada, you know, and it's actually a sore spot, this experience, you know, for five years, I, you know, you know, voted for the industry with my limited and hard-earned dollars, so, and then it was sold to a foreign country. And that's a heartbreak, and I've strongly advocated for in-behind stem cell research for, you know, for over ten years now, and to see that this technology might go to a foreign country, and I stay within the United States of America bothers me as an advocate, to be honest, you know, and other facets. So, it made me start wondering, and I don't know if we're there yet to think about this or not, maybe we are there, but the thing about, that Wall Street is going to have to start supporting this industry a whole lot more than it is. And we're trying to get through phase one, or phase one clinical trials and phase two, but we're going to have to have the business side come, and then, and I'm, and I'm like, well, where can this advocacy to corporations or to Wall Street, and I'm not, well versed in that spectrum of the universe, but, and we always think business is like, well, you can advocate to FDA, you can advocate to Congress, but business is not, that's not a realm for advocacy. And I don't know if that's the case or not, but the World Stem Cell Summit does bring Wall Street in front here together, and maybe this is a place where we can even pierce that bubble, hopefully.
Thank you, Joe, that was Joe Riggs. Dr. Riggs.
Yes, go ahead. Hi. I'm a, I'm a twenty-year veteran of the Parkinson's community, I've had Parkinson's about forty years, and I've worked diligently within that community, but I wanted to say that this was an absolutely fantastic opportunity for me to, to see a bigger picture. I recently became one of the ambassadors for the Americans for Cures, and it's, it's sort of lifted the whole picture of what's going on up a full notch, and it's, it's been a delight, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Adrienne, and I'm, this is my third summit.
Thank you.
And I'm coming to every one, I am just so, I come, I learn so much, and I'm just so energized, and I've always been in the background and kind of not spoken, actually, this is the first conference I've spoken out loud ever, although you wouldn't believe it. But it did change my life, it changed my life, and I've become, I don't know, a mama polar bear, for not just sickle cell disease, which I am, as you've heard my story, the fourth generation of mothers. I was the first generation that the family thought would avoid it, but due to some, you know, science wasn't always perfect, so I had this beautiful daughter who has the disease, and I always even, you know, I told my mom, when she, because she was so upset, because she was carrying the generations before, I became the person who carried the generations. And she was just, you know, "I'm so sorry," and I said, "It's going to get fixed, it's going to get fixed." And when I came here to the conference in San Diego, I was like, "Oh, yes, it's going to get fixed." And, and I know it is, and part of me wants to relieve that mommy weight, right? But as a mommy, you're always worrying, so I'd been worrying about, okay, so you're going to fix it, once you fix it, then how long is it going to take for people to get it? And how much is it going to cost for that to happen, so I'm going through the budget kind of thing, and what are we doing? And I heard in three of the sessions today, that, that did come up. And so, I want to say, yes, when we talk about the future, what happens here, really for me, I think, is a guarantee for the future. So, we'll see you next year, him and his lovely wife, I've named her, Cheryl, Cheryl, shut up, she, stand up, she is the first lady of the World Stem Cells.
Stand up, Cheryl.
Stand up.
Okay, come on.
Thank you.
Thank you. You know, you found your voice, okay, I just want you to know that. Anyone else have any comments, open forum, yeah, Mary Schneider.
Bernie, thank you. You gave me a voice a long, long time ago, when I didn't think that that was possible. And I've been coming to the summit for, I don't know how long now, it's, and I think since 2008, when I stalked Wise Young, because he talked about me on his blog, and I wasn't too far from Madison, Wisconsin, and I said, "I'm going to go and find this guy." And, but I had to get in, and then I realized how much it was, and I made some phone calls and ended up talking to Alan, and Alan said, "Oh, I know who you are." And allowed me to come, and from there, there was, I'm from the cord blood world, and a mom advocate, and so, there was no information, nothing was going on there about cord blood, it was all about spinal cord injury and embryonic stem cell research, which I supported greatly, but there was nothing going on with that. So, I just started trolling the halls and talking to anybody that would listen, and I kept doing it and kept doing it, and now we have these wonderful sessions. My son's Dr. Kurtzberg comes and speaks, we've got a lot of expansion as far as what people are talking about, they're, they're interacting with each other from different areas of science. So, I want to say thank you for supporting me all these years and giving me a voice.
You're, you're welcome, Mary, and you know, it's not about a, a single type of cell, we want, we're betting on the whole field to come through, because we don't know, we don't know what we don't know, right? And we're here to collect opportunities for the community and share opportunities. Jan?
I just want to thank you, Bernie, and Alan, we, I'm not sure we thanked Alan enough for all that he does.
Oh, I'm going to call him up in a second.
Okay.
I'm going to call him up for the second.
Thank you for this amazing conference. As a scientist, I've been going to conferences for about twenty-five years now, and this is just so wonderful, and it is, for me, it is so unique and inspirational due to the presence of the patient advocates, and that really rounds out the whole experience and makes this so different, so inspirational. And as we leave here, I will already be looking forward to next year in Palm Springs.
Thank you for your support. Let me call up my colleague, Alan Fernandez, now, because we're, you want, you have a comment, come on, yeah, please, go up.
My name is Daniel Medina, and I'm a patient advocate for Huntington's disease, and I just want to say that this, this is my first summit, and bringing all these people together from different aspects of the stem cell world, has really made this a wonderful experience. And I could tell you that, all of us that have our, we fight for our diseases, and we do what we do every day, and coming here... do what we do every day and coming here has really re-energized my views when it comes to stem cell. And I could tell you that when we go back to our respective places, we'll be re-energized and we'll be, we'll fight even harder. So, thank you.
Thank you.[1357.47][1357.47](APPLAUSE). Jean?
I was just waiting, hoping to be last.
You are.
So I think I've been to every one but one of these. You had one in Detroit once and I said, "No way."[1373.62][1373.62](LAUGHING). But you know what I like about this. You're always, you know, I can go to scientific conferences every month and probably more than that, but this meeting is not about just science, although people are very articulate about the science. It's teaching other people and learning from them about their viewpoints of the work that we're doing that's so valuable. So I do want to thank you. You're probably going to invite me again, aren't you?[1406.12][1406.12](LAUGHING).
You're part of the family.
Well, it's a lot of fun, it really is. It energizes me.
Thank you Jean. So to close out this, I really, I don't know what to say, it's beautiful. Thank you for all of your remarks, thank you for coming from around the world, thirty-five some countries. I just want to have my colleague have sort of the last word, although I really will have the last word. Because as you know, I worked with Alan for nine years doing this and I've had a lot of people I've worked with, associates and lawyers and business people in my long unusual career. I've never found a more loyal, passionate person than Alan Fernandez, who puts up with so much, believe me, I put up with a lot, but it's all worth it. It's all, Alan, please just take the mic a second, please.[1463.23][1463.23](APPLAUSE).
Nothing planned, but I assure you, we both care a whole hell of a lot about this community. And I see it as my purpose in life to advance the field of medicine and alleviate human suffering and chronic disease. And I know we're only just beginning. I'm highly unsatisfiable, if you know me. And I won't be satisfied until I can go on the street and engage with people outside this room and have them know a little bit more about what we're doing. I can guarantee you, in my nine years, eight or nine out of ten people I engage still think we're fighting embryonic stem cell research. And until I can go out and meet eight or nine out of ten people and have them know that cell therapy is available and improving the life of patients and families and communities and states and the country and other countries, we have such a huge opportunity. And we haven't yet cracked the right code to get supported by the public. We haven't yet cracked the code to have the corporate community advocating in the way that's required. We haven't cracked the code yet to have the academic community to advocate in the way that's required. And we, I think, feel that the patient organizations and communities and the patients are advocating enough for us, for the field, but it's actually the collective unity of all the stakeholder communities moving together as one voice. And if you think of the Arc de Triomphe in Paris, there's sixteen streets that come into the Arc. And until we can all go on one street together towards the Arc, we're going to have a delay in bringing forward the kind of results that we want for as many people as we want. So there's sixteen streets. So let's choose Avenue Foch because that's the poshest one. And then walk towards the one common goal. So I can't convey enough from my own personal experience, the importance of engaging others in the discussion of stem cells. It's our opportunity to talk to cab drivers, homeless, waiters, waitresses, bartenders, airline stewards, right? Person sitting next to you on the plane. I could go on and on and on of the wonderful opportunities I've had over time to engage with people that don't know what we do, but they sure as hell think it's cool, you know? But anyway, I want to just extend my deep appreciation for Bernie. You never bore.[1668.50][1668.50](APPLAUSE). No. I appreciate him. He has my back, I have his back. We work in tandem. You might be surprised to know that I saw Bernie only twice physically this year. Once in January in San Francisco, another time in July in Sweden. And we're still able to coordinate and get things accomplished. And it's a small organization, but now we're Regenerative Medicine Foundation and we've taken on this mission to a whole new level, I assure you, personally, every day. Because this is an energetic blast. So moving forward, we'll continue uniting the community, but much better than we have. And I do want to include, as you might know, I love music and I love art. And I see this project that we're working on more as a Renaissance project. It's interdisciplinary, multidisciplinary. So reach out, get more people to follow you next year, try to bring at least one or two other people to the summit next year that haven't been to the summit. And if every speaker did that, if every sponsor did that, it would be amazing how quick this event and the community would expand and unite. This is the Gatorade. This is the Gatorade, okay? And it's powerful Gatorade. So add the water, okay? And then the symphony that we so care about will sound much more in tune when we're all engaged in a more concerted, purposeful way.[1768.12][1768.12](APPLAUSE). So next year, December 6th through the 8th, West Palm Beach, Florida, right outside of Miami, be there, be there, we'll all be there together again. I declare the 11th Annual World Stem Cell Summit adjourned.[1792.12][1792.12](APPLAUSE).